Thank you. I'd like to call the public hearings, public hearings to order and just have a little conversation about protocol for public hearings. It's an opportunity for the residents of the town of Pownell to comment on items that the town is currently considering. On our public hearing docket, we have first the Tuttle Road discontinuance, second, the land use ordinance articles that will be having up for vote in the town meeting, and the annual town meeting warrant. All these conversations have an informational impact upon you. I didn't realize that was kind of vague. You have an opportunity to respond, comment, criticize, praise, any of these things that are coming forward in public hearing. My only request is, A, that you be courteous and respectful to anyone who you disagree with, and B, stand up to the microphone, tell us your name and your address so that we can put you in the public record. Are there any questions about how public hearings are going to go forward? I'm looking at my town administrator.
I'm fixing the layout, whatever reason it is. Off center.
Perfect. Okay. So, item number one is the Tuttle Road discontinuance. So this is a process that is steeped in common law and is as confusing as it is important, and we have referenced the town attorney on many occasions. So I'm going to read to you a letter that's gone out to property abutters, which might lend some clarity to the process. If you have any questions, please step forward and be heard. So the letter is, notice of proposed discontinuance by abandonment with public easement retained. Thank you. With public easement retained on the Tuttle Road. So, dear property owner, our records show that you own property abutting Tuttle Road. According to our records, for a period of time exceeding 30 consecutive years prior to this date, this road has not been kept passable for the use of motor vehicles at the expense of the town of Pownell. The town has also not accepted funds to maintain any portion of the Tuttle Road, of Tuttle Road for more than 84 months over the last 30 years. It is considered to be an abandoned road. This is to notify you that the select board has initiated the process to consider whether to issue an order to discontinue Tuttle Road by abandonment for the portion that has not been maintained. The select board will hold public meeting on April 14th, which is today, and will decide this issue. The municipal offices intend to retain a public easement on the road following its discontinuance by abandon, abandonment, as is permitted by 23 MRS 3028-A-85. Tuttle Road is a road beginning at an intersection with a hollow road and running for a distance of approximately one mile in a southeastly direction to an end point at the intersection with the Libby Road. Tuttle Road is shown more particularly on the town tax map 1, 5, and 6, on file at the town office of the town of Pownell, and is shown in the digitalized tax maps of the town of Pownell that can be accessed at www.pownell.org, PownellMaine.org. If an order of discontinuance by abandonment is approved by the vote of the select board, the public will still have the right to travel over it unless and until the public easement is extinguished as well. Ownership of the road is generally presumed to revert to the abutting landowners to the center line, but the town does not and will not provide any statement or representation of the status of such title. So do there any questions about what was said in that particular? Great. So Becky Taylor Chase, you have sent letters to all the abutters?
Yes, we sent them to all the abutters 30 days prior to this hearing. We did it certified, so we would get a return receipt on it as well. It's all in the file right there. We only had two come back, but Bradbury Mountain Park had several letters that kind of went to different addresses, so they were notified.
So I need to read this to the record. We have letters returned from Emily and Timothy. Help with pronouncing. Ace, thank you, sorry. I know, I'm just reading the return to the record. Thank you. Carolyn Radding, Radding, and Beverly Town. Great. And there are no other abutters present that did not receive a letter. Excellent. So we now move forward and have a discussion which will not be open to public comment amongst the board. Mr. O'Brien, comments?
I, without any objection from any abutters, I can't see any reason not to move forward with the formal abandonment.
Stay?
I would agree. I would say that if there's no objection, then I can't see a reason not to move forward.
Becky Taylor Chase, is there any legal reason why the town should not consider discontinuance by abandonment of this section of Tuttle Road?
None that I can think of.
Have you heard any objections by abutters?
None.
There's been no correspondence to the town registering complaints or acts of rebellion?
That is correct. No correspondence on the abandonment process.
Okay, so then, Mr. O'Brien, I think a motion is ordered, in order.
So you have to wait till the regular meeting to do that?
Wait until...
Because you're in public hearing right now.
So I...
So the motion, I would expect, is that there is a memorandum of understanding among the board that we should bring this to regular town meeting. Would you like to say that we have an agreement of understanding?
So the select board can actually vote on it. It doesn't have to go to town meeting. So you can vote tonight if you want to abandon it, and then it goes to a ten...
Regular meeting.
No, but you don't, it doesn't need to be on the warrant. The select board has the authority to, to vote tonight to abandon the road. Then it goes to a 10-day appeal process through the county commissioners. Yep.
Said we cannot do it during a public hearing.
Right, just at the regular meeting, you can motion.
And their new business.
So we won't?
We won't motion anything at this point.
May further discussion be on, of, yes?
Absolutely, please step forward.
Hi, Carolyn Radding, 222 Libby Road. Just wondering, you know, with all of this, are responsibilities, are there any, to this right-of-way? I mean, it just exists. People can use it to access, like, Bradbury Mountain.
You do not have to maintain it.
Because there's a whole thing about the right to maintain it.
You have the right to, but you don't have to.
Don't. Okay, okay. So basically, we don't really have to do anything. Okay.
It just revert, the ownership reverts to the center line.
I see.
Where it abuts you.
Okay, okay. Sounds good.
The guarantee is that there'll be no motorized wagon train for the rest of...
Rest of time, rest of my lifetime. Okay. All right. I think that was really my only question, if we had to really worry about doing anything.
How is it going to expect geraniums or?
Okay. Can we, you know, like, if we want to do cleanup in there and all that kind of stuff, that's within our right to just go ahead and do it. Okay.
As your property.
Yeah, so a question about that. It sort of becomes unofficially part of, like, Beverly and I are neighbors. Half of it goes to me, half of it goes to Beverly. Is that officially our property or not really?
I'd be satisfied.
Okay.
We're expecting you not to come to blows over what the center line is. And if we are, we relegate any property dispute at the civil dispute between neighbors.
Okay.
Okay, so once we abandon, laws come off. Fight makes right sometimes. We're expecting civil, you know, civil...
So don't plant your geraniums on her side.
On her side. Good. We can, we can deal with that, so.
Any questions, please ask.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
What? Beverly Town, 238 Libby Road. So what is the size of the road? I mean, is it, do, do we know what was?
Two rod road.
It's a two rod road, I believe.
So you know how many feet it provides?
No, I don't.
Sixteen, sixteen, sixteen and a half. Thank you. Sixteen to four.
So you, so you each get 16 feet, four inches.
So we each get 16.
And like your property, so you need to do some...
Yeah. It's actually become a waterway since it's been abandoned, so it, it isn't exactly passable by anything but foot traffic, I would say.
Town will not promote?
Yeah.
Access, it just needs to retain.
Okay. Good.
So don't shoot if somebody walks up through there.
No.
I've seen many pedestrians using that.
What kind of blocks are part of the road? Will walk up that area just to get to, like, the snowmobile trail? And bikes, the bikes, the most, I guess.
Okay. Any other thoughts, questions? Put that one aside. The next public hearing is on the land use ordinance articles. I shall read them one by one. If anybody has any questions, select board, or Mr. Tim Giddings, a code enforcement officer, or who has been really the, the engineer on a lot of these changes, which the town owes a debt of gratitude for that. I think you'd be willing to answer some of those questions. Okay. Okay, good. Thank you. So is the article three, one of those that we need to talk about?
No, it starts at article five.
Okay, that's what I thought. Article five, shall an ordinance entitled 2025 Amendments to the Zoning Ordinance of the Town of Pownell, Maine, regarding Section 100 General be enacted. The proposed ordinance is available for review and inspection at the town clerk's office and will be available at the town meeting, and that is Exhibit A. Do we have Exhibit A front of them?
Yeah, they're all up on the table.
The code enforcement officer also wrote a summary, too, that kind of helps break down what each article does.
Right, so Exhibit A. What has been eliminated is in the red. Does everybody have a copy?
Right on the table.
I'll read them because they need to be read. So what's eliminated is G, no more than one principal building and its accessory dwellings are regulated by, this ordinance may be located on any one lot used as a residential lot except in cases of a planned unit development or multiple dwelling units that meet all other applicable sections of the ordinance. So that has been eliminated. Tim, you want to speak to that? So this is one that's out. This is one that I had struggled on to find the correct wording to comply with LD 2003, which LD 2003 has changed Pownell's way of thinking a lot, or the way we used to think. You are now allowed two dwellings on a piece of property if you have enough acreage, square footage, and any lot that can house a dwelling can now also house, house an accessory dwelling unit. So in order to comply with that, I had written something up here, but the town attorney, which vetted, who vetted all of this, said, just take it out. He thought it made a lot more sense just to get rid of it. So that's the reason why it's all being struck. Any questions at all for the board or code enforcement officer? Seeing none, Article six, shall an ordinance entitled 2025 Amendments to the Zoning Ordinance of the Town of Pownell, Maine, regarding Section 400, definitions be enacted. The proposed ordinance is available for review and inspection at the town clerk's office and will be available at the town meeting. This is also Exhibit A, definitions. So basically, in definitions, the only thing here was we added a definition for single-family dwellings and two-family dwellings. A single-family dwelling, a dwelling unit for the use of a lone family, and two-family dwelling, a structure for the use of two families connected by a common wall. So those were, last year, when the ordinance got visited and, and voted to change, those, single-family dwelling and two-family dwellings were added into the ordinance with no definition. So I created a definition. Any questions about that particular warrant item, definitions, just trying to make? Jesse, please. Just your name and your location.
Jesse Peters Allen Road. Does that, it says two-family, connected by a common wall. Right. What about a two-story, two-family?
It's also...
Okay, okay. All right. Didn't say that.
Everybody understand the question and the answer? So a two-story dwelling is also... Any other questions about that particular one? Article seven, shall an ordinance be entitled, shall an ordinance entitled 2025 Amendments to the Zoning Ordinance of the Town of Pownell, Maine, regarding Section 504, zoning districts, be enacted? The proposed ordinance is available for review and inspection at the town clerk's office and will be available at the town meeting. This is, again, Exhibit A under zoning district. Yep? So in this one, we removed dwelling and accessory dwelling units and inserted single-family dwellings and two-family dwellings and accessory dwelling units to better comply, better understand and to comply with LD 2003. Head to the wisdom of complying them pre-order. Yes?
I'm just having a hard time.
Can you come forward and just sort of identify yourself, please, and your address?
Heidi Richards Mine Road. I'm just having a hard time following where you're looking at on the paper.
504 zoning districts, permitted uses, number two.
Okay, thank you.
I'll be more clear. I'm sorry, that was my mistake. Any other questions about Article seven?
I do have a question. Beverly Town, Libby Road. How about rooming houses, houses, somebody who rents out rooms? Is that considered in any of these definitions?
No, that, that isn't. You mean something like a short-term rental, or an inn, or a hotel, or motel?
Somebody who has renters in their house. Renting out a room, so.
The town has no policy about renting.
Okay, so that's, like, accepted under a single family?
I can only answer by saying that the town has no policy. I mean, that's, that's sort of the reality. Well, that's a great question. Any other questions? Okay. Article eight, shall an ordinance entitled 2025 Amendments to the Zoning Ordinance Town of Maine, Town of Pownell, Maine, regarding Section 603, backlots be enacted? Proposed ordinance is available for review and inspection at the town clerk's office and will be available at the town meeting. So we need to flip... So John, there were a lot more on Article... I'm sorry. I apologize. Can you go through it? Can we go back to Article seven? My mistake. So if you follow the narrative along with the marked-up ordinance, I think it's a lot easier to understand, at least I hope it is. So... Does everybody have the narrative in their hands? Again, the, the next four, A, four, B, I, is there to comply, comply with LD 2003 on... So that would be on page 38, if you're looking at that. A, four, B, I. Sorry, Tim, I'm just going to interrupt you. So that's on page 38, A, four, B, I. Hey, Tim? Yeah. And it adds clarity to how many family dwellings are allowed. The way it was written before, it really didn't say how many were allowed. So anybody who wanted to come in and build ten dwellings on a piece of property as long as they had enough square footage to do it. So this sells out that it is a two dwelling, or a single-family dwelling, and a, or a, and/or... Go ahead. You don't have to identify. We now know. Incident and malcontent.
That's right. So my question is, does road frontage, is that something that is involved in that?
Road frontage remains the same. You still have to have 300 feet of road frontage or dwelling. If you have enough acreage, so a single-family home requires 90,000 square feet of buildable land. And then to, for an additional dwelling unit, you need another 60,000 square feet. So, but you don't need any more road, the road frontage.
Somebody can build, they have a long, narrow lot. They could build a house, they could have a house in front and build one.
As long as they meet all the setbacks elsewhere in the ordinance. So 25 feet on the side, 25 feet rear, rear, and 40 feet in the front. And then septic system also has setbacks from wells and things like that.
Why was that changed?
The state law changed it. LD 2003 is intended by the state to modify local control of zoning ordinances to allow for more, more built. We have no control over the state law. We're just trying...
Why are we discussing?
Because we have to change our ordinances to comply with state law. And it's a good thing for all town people to know that the zoning ordinance, which has been in existence since 1975, is changing.
Does it have, I mean, have to look at environmental impacts or something?
You've got to step up to the mic if you're going to continue.
I haven't really visited this, but it seems like there'd be environmental impacts to doing things like that.
So the, the state did not go away with the septic system rules. So there are rules about how, you know, distance from septic systems, from wells, from property lines, and from houses, and things like that. So that all, and from, especially from wetlands and things like that, shoreline zone. So that's still in play. So if a lot would have to comply with all of those, would it have two dwellings?
I mean, part of what I like about Pownell is all the trees, and it seems to me you're encouraging a lot of, you know, taking down trees, which is really a climate issue, too.
We're not encouraging anything.
Right.
We're complying with state law. Yes?
Yeah, I mean, I guess if I had a long, a long, a lot, somebody next to me was building a house that, you know, I expected that to happen.
The great thing about this public hearing is that now you're being informed about the state is imposing upon us and is incumbent upon all of us to act politically. If that, if, if you disagree with this, we have town representatives, we have state representatives, we have United States senators. It's our, you know, this is our town. If this doesn't fly with you, then... Absolutely, Kate, Tim.
What we're doing right now is reviewing at a public hearing the ordinances that will be on the warrant, which will be voted on by all Pownell residents at town meeting. So they can be voted to be passed, or they can be voted to not be passed, depending on how the residents of Pownell vote. Does that make sense?
We have to do it by state law.
But we're still required to do it by state law.
But the vote doesn't mean a whole lot except voting.
So the, the ordinance, actually, by changing the ordinance in, in this way, it gives own guidance in following the state law. So there are, are some things that can't be done. You know, if a creative person came in and says, well, the state says I can do this, there's nothing in your ordinance says you can't do it that way. At least there's something spelled out in an ordinance on how you do it, and just what is all. But it still has to, you know, we can't change the ordinances to go against state law. So we have to comply with the state. And they didn't. Does that make sense? I want, I want you, why? We're just trying to make it as clear as, as it can be so that our ordinances, which are, have been historically pretty loose and, and what's the word that we always bandy about? We're trying to tighten them up so that as the state requires more things from the town, we are trying to be far more definite in what our ordinance say so that people cannot wiggle around a lack of clarity in our ordinance, which we've historically had. We're being driven by development pressure to tighten up our ordinance. Which is, I hate. Okay. That was a great question. Tim, want to keep going? So the next suggested change here is in B, or G, excuse me, that same rural district, RA, 130. Page 39. Page 39. G, remove mobile home park on the parcel identified as lot number 43 on the town tax map number nine. The reason is, at the last town meeting, the town voted to put a conservation easement with the Royal River Conservation Trust on that, so it can no longer be a trail. So it cannot be designated as an area in town where a trail park can be built. Any questions about that? Number H, Tim? Number H was just struck two-family dwelling because it was already mentioned above. On page 40, Tim? So this, under 45, in the middle of the page, we remove mobile home parks, 30A MRS A4358, as a special exception. So it is no longer considered a special exception in rural district RA. Any questions about what a rural, special exception is, or a district is, or anything like that? All right, how about on page 40, number four, A? Have a, you struck out an and and turned it to an or. Right, it's a better definition, so two-family dwelling units or two-single-family dwelling units. So it's not, it's not both. It's, it's one or the other.
On page forty-one, Tim, I? Single family and two family dwellings?
So again, this defines better about how many dwellings are, are allowed on a piece of property. So it's not sixty thousand square feet for each additional unit to infinity. It is an additional sixty thousand square feet for a two-family dwelling or an additional single-family dwelling. So it, it describes it better to limit the number of dwellings that is allowed on a large piece of property.
You just go to the.
Yeah. Mercedes, poor, two eight nine Lawrence Road, the dirt side of Lawrence. And Tim, could you just help me with the one you just hit? The one on forty-one? And then going back to the and, minimum lot area. Can you just help me with language here? It's minimum lot area, little, two little I's, two family dwelling units or two single-family dwellings. Does that mean two, two family dwelling units? Or does that mean a single, two-family dwelling unit? And can you tell me about the lot size?
Page are you on?
Right.
Forty.
Page forty. Okay, minimum lot size.
I'm wondering about the S on units in two family dwelling units or two single-family dwellings. So I'm wondering, does that mean two, two-family dwelling units? Or does that mean a single, two-family dwelling unit?
Yeah, I, I see if I'm trying to.
And, yeah, why is that one fifty versus? Oh, that is one fifty, never mind. Now I'm getting it, yeah, but I think we might need to just clean up the, the S. Yeah. Sorry, all of that for an S. Yeah.
Can you see that, Becky? Thank you, Mercedes. Oh, that's okay. Does everyone understand what just happened there? We purged an S. Thank you, Mercedes. Does everyone understand the language on page forty-one? B, little I, under single-family and two dwelling, two-family dwellings?
It, it may be advantageous to add one two-family dwelling unit or two single-family.
Maybe.
Yeah, or an article like A. Yeah.
A, two, for, yeah.
Just because of the parallelism there?
Yeah.
Understand that, Becky?
Tim and I will work on it.
Is it agreeable?
Yeah, I think so. Read this too many times. All right, the next one is found on page forty-two, under rural district RB, number two. Permitted use.
So this is struck, lots south of the Tuttle Road must have a requirement frontage on the Tuttle Road, and only Tuttle Road may be used for access to the lot if the mobile home park is placed on. So the state has, has told us now that we cannot, we cannot allow, we have to allow mobile homes wherever. Anywhere where a single-family dwelling can lie, mobile home also be. So the ordinance used to specify an area where mobile homes could be placed.
Does anybody have any questions about this particular article?
Just, I might have missed, just for hearing purposes. Did you say that anywhere that a single-family home can be, that there can be a mobile home park with multiple units or just a mobile home? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on that particular amendment? All right, the next one is three, special exception on page forty-two, Tim?
So this used to just say special exceptions. These are the same as rural district RA. But they're not anymore because we struck mobile home parks out of that district. And we have now are allowing them in RB, which they were always allowed before. And the reason why we are not striking them out of both is because under state law, we have to have an area where we allow.
So by passing this particular amendment, we are curing rural district B as the site of any potential mobile home parks. We need to do this to comply with state law. We need to have an, they call it an overlay. This isn't quite an overlay, but it's a, a zone available for mobile home. Any questions at all about page forty-two, three, special exception? There are a lot of them. Seeing none? Next one is still on page forty-three. Was number four, dimensional standards, small letter I, Tim?
The same as for rural district RB, RA. So we need to look at that one as well.
Having a hard time hearing Tim.
Sorry, this is the, the same, same language that was in RA district. And this is just making it the same in RB.
Tim, right now, that is not the same, should be the same. Since, if we're missing the word two, as in T W O.
I don't.
Yeah. Sorry.
In the one we're on right now.
Page forty-three?
Page forty-three, I think we struck the two and put in the or, but I think we wanted it to be or two, single-family, as it was in the first? Okay.
Becky, are you on board on that one? Tim, you okay with that?
Yep. Good judge.
Thank you, Mercedes.
Editor in chief.
Glad we have a hearing. Next, our, next one is on page forty-four. It's under D yard requirements. Three I, Tim?
I'm lost now.
Page forty-four. Okay. D, three little I's, single street frontage requirement. You've added family. So it's now single family instead of single dwelling.
Right.
Any questions about that?
Just to match the definitions. Just to match the definitions, yeah.
Questions about that particular?
Doing a great job following along. Habits of work, very good. Next one is page forty-five. Number seven.
So this is put in there to better describe the requirements for a backlot.
Article eight, have we moved to article eight? Becky, have we moved to article eight on this? Okay, so it's still under seven. I'm sorry, Tim.
No.
Yes.
Eight is backlots.
No, it's under district, sorry.
Okay.
As usual.
Did we get that on the recording?
All right, be that way.
So we've added an asterisk to seven, and it should be an asterisk up here in the, in the block as well. I just couldn't figure out how to do it. I was going to do it and I forgot to do it. So a backlot requires no street frontage. The lot that the backlot was created from requires three hundred and fifty to five hundred and ninety-nine feet and allows a fifty-foot right-of-way to the backlot. So where, there was, people were coming in really confused about how to get a backlot. And it didn't describe the, from three hundred and fifty feet to three hundred and nine, yeah, four hundred and ninety-nine. Basically, the, the reasoning behind that, when they created the ordinance, was anything over six, everything, anything six hundred feet and over can have a development road. So backlots were not allowed on those. And also clarifies that the, the acreage that retains, is retained by the property. Or the, these.
Any questions about that? There will be a quiz. Next one. That's it. All right, any questions? We're going to move on to Article eight. Article eight says, shall an ordinance entitled 2025 Amendments to the Zoning Ordinance Town of Pownell, Maine regarding Section 603 backlots be enacted? Proposed ordinance is available for review and inspection at the town clerk's office will be available at the town meeting, once again, Exhibit A. This is on page sixty, under 603A purpose. Tim?
So again, in the, the, under A, it is better describing the requirements for the frontage for a backlot and also what is allowed on the back lot. Which is got by state, state law, new state law has to be the same as what would be one eighty.
Any questions about that particular amendment? And now the next one is under D, Tim?
So under D, this is a change that will allow the code enforcement office to administer or, yeah, administer the lots that have already been divided once in town. So a lot that has been subdivided only once. In other words, you've had a mother lot or the original lot, and somebody has taken one lot out of that. So the remainder lot can now be handled by the code enforcement instead of going to the planning board for a, it used to be called a reset subdivision. So or revise subdivision, what it would be. So it's, it's an easy process to go through. And the code enforcement is already allowed to do it for a lot that has never been divided. So this just makes it, so it doesn't have to go to the planning board. It also makes it, so if you did go to the planning board, there's a two thousand dollar fee for it. And if you go through the code enforcement officer, there's a five hundred. So it, it saves the citizens that want to do it. And it's the same, you still have to do the same thing as what you would have to do in the planning board. It's just handled by the code enforcement instead of.
So this is my error. That was Article nine, and so I'll read that. Shall ordinance entitled 2025 Amendments to the Zoning Ordinance Town of Pownell regarding Section 605, single lot ordinance being enacted. Dollar relevant. Appeals after. Anybody have any questions about that particular amendment? It is a administrative change to a Emerson by subdivision. Seeing none? Next is Article ten, which will be the last one. Did you, an ordinance entitled 2025 Amendments to the Zoning Ordinance Town of Pownell, Maine regarding Section 615 accessory dwelling units being enacted? So I think we missed a little bit.
Yeah, you skipped.
Did I skip?
So under D, there's a lot of red. And under, you know, three, B two, there's a lot of red. And, and three, also, there's a lot of, and it just, basically, it tried to clean up the language so it was easier to understand. It was very hard to understand before and tried to make it say the same thing, but with fewer words.
So reading through that, if you have any questions for Tim, this is all vetted by the town attorney, so really made it far more lucid. Said administrative thing, yeah. Any questions at all? Sorry that I jumped the gun.
Here, there are more under the backlots, under G regulations. Just more clarification. And there is actually a change in the way that G three was written. So minimum lot size of three acres. And the suggested change is to, the front lot must remain conforming to all dimensional standards. So in other words, it must keep the ninety thousand square feet that valuable area instead of saying three acres.
And number four, Tim?
And number four.
It's on page sixty-three.
So again, the language changed to, to make it easier to understand the process and, and what needs to happen.
Number five, Tim, on page sixty-three?
It was described, number five was already described in the change in, up above. So the attorney's suggestion was to strike five.
Number six, Tim?
Just, so, sorry, this is a detail. If you're striking number five, does the numbering have to change on all subsequent?
Right. Number six?
So this clarifies that the driveway to the backlot can share the driveway to the front lot if they so choose. So that way it eliminates curb cuts off the main road. So it's, but the right-of-way, the needed right-of-way has to be able to, at some point, be able to handle the driveway and something. And this is between the homeowners, there isn't an auction for driveway ends.
Questions about number six? Matter of sharing driveways to eliminate curb cuts? What, number seven, Tim?
Again, it describes what is allowed on the backlot and to comply with LD 2003.
Questions? None. The last article is Article ten, shall an ordinance entitled 2025 Amendments to the Zoning Ordinance Town of Pownell, Maine regarding Section 615, accessory dwelling units being enacted? The change is on page ninety-six, under 615.
So again, just trying to follow state law and knowing that there are more changes coming, try to make it open in. Whatever the state says is what we have.
The accessory dwelling unit should have lived, living, sleeping, sanctuary.
Should be living, shouldn't it? Becky, you have that? Thank you.
Well, if it's made out of wood, it lived at one time. If it's made out of wood, it lived at one time.
I just have a couple edits to ask you about because on page thirty-eight, it says codes enforcement officer. It'd be code enforcement officer. It'd be code enforcement officer.
What section?
Uh, the top of the page, minimum net residential area.
This is the time to get those done, so.
And, and one place I noticed back lots is two words versus one. And I don't know if you want to, um, identify, I'm wondering if it, in each of the ordinances, if code enforcement officer should have in parentheses after CEO so that everyone knows what we're talking about when they see CEO throughout it.
That might be a lot bigger change to do between, that we might not be able to get done between now and the next public hearing of the editing.
But idea, I don't think we're gonna be able to.
Could it be referenced in the definition? So then throughout the document down the road, if we say CEO, it's a reference that code enforcement officer, or CEO. So that way, if we have language, it's going back and forth, at least it's referencing back and forth, and then we can look at cleaning it up next year. Does that make sense? Yeah, I'll take a look.
Any other questions about? Great. Again, I'm getting, thank you very much for all the work you put into that. All right, so I'll close that, um, public hearing, and the next public hearing is the annual town meeting warrant. Same document, only we'll move to, um, Article eleven.
Good to do three and four first, because those are those secret ballot ones.
So Article three is a secret ballot. It is, it was deceived by a citizen's petition. And I will read Article three. The citizen's petition was verified by the town administrator, the proper number of signatures were certified. So it is legal. Article three by secret ballot, shall this municipality authorize the state to permit the sale of spirits for off-premises consumption on days other than Sunday? And spirits meaning, um, not the ethereal kind, but the alcoholic. Okay, so is any? So that is Article three. Any questions about Article three? That'll be an up and down. Pownell is, is a dry town that needs to have a town meeting vote to allow hard alcohol sales. Okay, Article four says, shall this municipality authorize the state permit the sale of spirits for off-premises consumption on Sundays? This is vest- vestigial from the time when alcohol not allowed to be sold Sunday. And that would need to vote to allow spirits to be sold on Sunday based on another citizen position. Any question? None? We're gonna skip to page two of seven. Article eleven, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate one hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars for the capital project fund. The select board recommends approval. Any questions about what the capital project fund is? Good. Article twelve, this is budget articles now, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate seven hundred and eight thousand, two hundred and forty-five thousand for general government. I will not read. You're welcome to look at it. We have a second town's, uh, public hearing. There's something in this warrant article that you don't understand. As I've zipped by without reading the figures, please come to the second one and ask, or email the select board or the town administrator. But the, under general government, the increase is twenty-six percent. We have added a position.
There are narratives that kind of go along, um, with each article that just gives you a couple of sentences. And then the original presentations, um, are recorded and up on the website as well, so you can go back and sort of view the original presentations of the budgets too, as it went through the process.
Andy's gonna read the narrative.
Okay, Article twelve, the general government budget is up twenty-six percent this year. The biggest drivers are increases in technology and the realignment of department head wages to reflect current labor market trends. The budget committee and select board recommendations differ because the select board were still in salary negotiations following the evaluation process when the budget committee voted on their recommendations.
Questions about that? So the budget committee has recommended to a hearing from the audit with us, three percent of the base of the select board, select board, who is really recommending a thousand dollars. Well, I swear that. Okay, any questions? Article thirteen, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate twelve thousand dollars for human services. Andy?
This budget covers our partnership with Freeport Community Services and our required general assistance. There is no increase in the budget from last year.
Question? Article fourteen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate forty-four thousand, seven hundred dollars for Mallet Hall.
Included in this budget is the painting of the north side of Mallet Hall. The budget is down nine percent, mostly driven by a better estimated cost for painting the north side of the building.
Questions about Article fourteen? Article fifteen, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate two hundred and thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars for public safety.
Do we have the attachment? Okay. See attached memo from the fire chief. The twenty twenty-six fire and rescue budget has some significant increases this year, so I wanted to send along this document with some explanations for some of the larger increases. At the time of this letter, I have still not received a quote from Freeport from, for EMS transport services, so that is still an unknown. So no big changes to report at this time in this category. However, I think at this, this moment, we're at forty thousand for transport services.
Five thousand dollars.
Yeah. Under the administration tab, you'll notice an increase to membership dues. This increase was largely driven by an increase to the coastal mutual aid into a few other memberships. You should also notice a decrease in, to the computer line. This was due to us starting to switch over to the state's free software as opposed to paying a third party for software. I have added a cell phone stipend as well. As a department head, I use my cell phone multiple times daily for fire department business. Under compensation, I have asked for an increase to the officers' stipends for caller adjustments and a job well done. The select board has asked me to put in twenty thousand as a placeholder for the chief's position. I have also requested an increase to maintenance and training pay lines due to more, a more robust roster turning out. I have also asked for an increase to call pay as way, as well. This is due to several factors, one being the need to implement a night differential pay system for nighttime turnout. And also the increase to minimum wage is a driver to all these increases. In buildings, there are adjustments to the utilities based on current trends, nothing major. In operations, we will see some large increases. In engine two's maintenance line, you'll notice an increase of ten thousand dollars. This is due to the pump packing leaking, and it is beyond adjustment. What this means is that the lower half of the pump needs to be rebuilt. This issue was discovered this year during annual pump testing. Another big item is under hose and ladder testing. This is mostly driven by Maine Bureau of Labor Standards. They are now requiring us to pressure test our forestry hose as well as our attack hose. This is a new mandate. We are also requesting an increase to our fire gear line. We have several new members that need to update gear. We need to replace one of our four gas meters as well. Under medical supplies, we are requesting an increase to start replacing our aging AEDs. They are no longer serviceable once they break down. And finally, under new hose and fittings, we are requesting funds to purchase a second blitzfire nozzle. This is a special nozzle capable of flowing up to five hundred gallons a minute. And with limited staffing needed to deploy, we determined that we could have used a second one at the Merrill Road burn fire a couple of years ago. Respectfully submitted, Jesse Peters, chief.
Questions at all about Article fifteen, public safety? Thank you, Jesse, for the clarification. Article sixteen, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate one million, one thousand, one hundred and eighty-three dollars for public works.
The public works budget has a six percent increase, mostly driven by facilities maintenance and compensation. Per our recent inspection through our property and casualty insurance company, we need to have an engineer inspect the large sand and salt shed for structural integrity. The select board has realigned this road commissioner salary with current labor market trends.
Questions about Article sixteen? Article seventeen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate one hundred and seventy-two thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars for solid waste.
The solid waste budget is up forty-three percent. Echo Main tipping fees have increased by thirty-one percent, and the town is producing more waste and recycling. Their yearly contract has a five percent increase as outlined in the contract.
Yes.
What they pay at Echo Main when they dump our trash and recycling, what we have to in turn pay our hauler.
Good question. Article eighteen, the other question, seventeen, Article eighteen, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate five thousand, seven hundred dollars for the Pownell Center Water Association.
The Pownell Center Water Association budget is, has a fifty-four percent increase. The two factors are increased insurance costs and cost for fuel for the newly installed standby generator.
But Article eighteen now has a generator which will not require Mr. O'Brien and Mr. Nielsen periodic visits during power, power. We do appreciate all the service that folks you did to keep the water flowing. Thank you, let's jump. Article nineteen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate eight thousand, five hundred dollars for cemetery.
The cemetery budget has a forty-two percent increase, mostly in payroll, as they are now a full crew completing the work that is necessary in maintaining the cemeteries.
Questions about Article nineteen? Article twenty, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate two hundred and sixty-two thousand, three hundred and forty-one dollars for debt service and other obligations.
Good news, the debt service budget is down six percent. As we pay down our bonding, the interest reduces. The bond bank also did an audit this year, and through this practice, they were able to pass along interest savings for the remainder of one of our bonds.
About our deficit. Article twenty-one, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate five thousand dollars for the Recreation Committee Enterprise Fund.
Five hundred. Not five thousand.
Say five thousand?
You did? Surprised me too.
Five hundred dollars for the Recreation Committee Enterprise Fund.
There is no increase in the recreation budget over the previous year.
Questions about Article twenty-one? Article twenty-two, see if the town will transfer from unassigned fund balance and appropriate up to five hundred thousand dollars for the Future Facilities Committee for the following project. Design and complete construction contract documents for the future collated, co-located fire station and public works facility.
Uh, this one just says, see exhibit B, and they are available on the table. I'm not gonna read four or five pages of it, but please read through this and come back for our next public hearing if you have any questions on it. And if Susan would like to speak to it.
Well, um, so since then, the committee, um, you might want to read the very first part, um, so they have submitted a potential edit to the warrant, which changes the funding a little bit. Um, some of it now um, in there, exhibit B, the very basically first paragraph. So this would change where the funding comes from.
Okay, so they're saying, so this would be a, um, an edit, so we would they are requesting, and the select board would still have to approve, they're requesting, um, see if the town will transfer, uh, will transfer.
And appropriate.
And appropriate four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars from undesigned fund balance, thirty thousand from public works impact fees, and fifteen thousand dollars from public safety impact fees for the following project. Design and complete construction contract documents for the future combined public safety, public works facility. So. Okay, so a procedural thing. We are going to have a closed discussion. Yeah, because we're in a public hearing. Okay, so Article twenty-two is gonna ask for five hundred thousand dollars. Where that money comes from will be decided during the regular select board meeting, but there is gonna be a request for five hundred thousand dollars for design, complete construction contract for the whole lake and fire and public works. That's the way.
Yes.
Okay. Questions about Article twenty-two? Tim?
So does, um, what does this do to our fund, fund balance? Does it take more than what our policy recommends that we hold in fund balance, or?
Nope, so our, um, just to back up and, um, give a little context, so we are required to keep a certain amount in our unassigned fund, uh, value. So roughly, to make that easy, that's a million dollars. Our current unassigned fund balance at the audit on June thirtieth was two point four million dollars. So we would be staying well above the required with still some surplus in there.
Also, all this was vetted by the lawyer as far as usage of undesigned fund balance.
Okay, we'll move on to Article twenty-three. See if the town will raise and appropriate up to twenty thousand dollars for the Economic Development and Sustainability Committee for external consulting, further, um, visioning.
The committee will look to contract with IOV Consulting to help work alongside the committee to develop a clear path balanced against the findings from the two thousand twenty-three town visioning sen- session and the GP Cog report.
Sure, okay. You say that and so there was, if some people may remember, we had, um, a session with GP Cog in the boardroom. People were asked what they would like the center of town to look like. You because piece together a report. And I think this is asking for a complimentary report to go along with that. That.
Help, help with the action items and that were outlined in the report, basically.
Move forward and be proactive in looking into the future of the villagers.
And IOV, um, is the consulting firm we used for the TIF project last year.
So we've had a good relationship with them, they're highly, I recommend them, if we're going to spend that money, that's where the development begins. Any more questions about Article 23?
Can I state my name again? Okay, thank you. Uh, is there somewhere that we can view that report online? Because it's already, you said, this is a complimentary? Yes.
I don't, I don't believe it's accessible online, and we don't have the capacity with our website to put it on there.
Is somebody from the public allowed to view it?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Where can they find that?
I believe there's a copy.
I have a PDF version, it's just a matter of whether we have the space to put it up there at that point. So I'll check with Jalen on that. We did have some printed for a while, but we can print more, yeah, absolutely.
So if you'd like one...
Can you email it?
I, I can email it as well.
Thank you.
Okay, Article 24, see if the town will raise and appropriate $60,000 for the assessing and revaluation reserve. Uh, the time has come. You may, may not know that your house's value has risen a bit since you bought it, and the town is compelled by the state to continue to value our town to keep it in compliance with state valuation. We're currently at about 50% of state valuation, which really impacts our relationship with our largest landowner, CMP, and so we just need to buy law. We're starting to request and hopefully put money in a fund so that when we can get an RFP signed, we'll have the money testing. Questions about revaluation? All right, Article 25, see if the town will appropriate $7,000 from the coronavirus local, coronavirus, excuse me, local fiscal recovery fund, funds? Should probably put a D there, local has been fund, AKA American Rescue Plan or ARPA funds. See if the town for further government for the following project: repair the three dormers at Mallet Hall. Andy?
The three dormers at Mallet Hall need to be repaired. This is ARPA money that was received for the office renovation, was allocated for the off, office renovation, but not spent. This article asks the town to spend the money towards the dormer repairs, or reallocate it towards the dormer repairs.
That coincides with Article 26, which is to see if the town will raise and appropriate up to $43,000 for the following project: repair the three dormers at Mallet Hall. We're just adding the ARPA funds, which we need to use with unfortunately raised and appropriated from your wallet. Total cost will be $50,000. Questions? All right, Article 27, to see if the town will vote to accept and apply $741,000 for the following non-property tax revenues to reduce the total amount authorized to be raised by taxation. See if the town will vote to authorize the select board and town treasurer to accept any additional revenues or funds. Spend any other revenue from the state, federal, local, and private sources for the support of the town that may be used to reduce the amount required to be raised by taxation. Andy?
These are the revenues that we anticipate to receive, there's a table in the article, and these are based on projections and past trends.
Pretty straightforward there. Any questions? This is Article, Article 28, to see if the town will vote to transfer from unassigned fund balance and appropriate up to $300,000 to minimize the tax mill rate increase. Andy?
This is a transfer from the unassigned fund balance, often referred to as surplus or undesigned funds, to help minimize the mill rate increase. The select board has done this for, for many previous years.
Questions about, we're actually transferring from your money that is in surplus of undesigned fund balance to help offset any tax increases. Unfortunately, and we will have exact, well, pretty close numbers, there will be a tax increase. Probably the first volley across the bottle going to happen. Try to do our best. Any questions about 28? Article 29, to see if the town will vote to transfer and appropriate funds remaining in the Pownell Center Water Association, AKA PCWA, offering funds at the end of fiscal year 26 to the PCWA reserve fund. Andy?
This allows the transfer of any unexpended funds to go into the Pownell Center Water Association Sinking Fund. The fund stands at $11,264.86 with a goal of $20,000. The purpose of this fund is to have money available in the event of an emergency to keep the PCWA functioning. Now, past three or four years, we've had to replace every pump in there, and we expended some funds.
Questions about Article 29? Article 30. Andy, we should have an open house for the PCWA.
Let's do it.
Know where the PCWA, I'm always curious, anyone ever heard of that? Anyone know where the pump is?
I know.
Be a great question that a taxpayer resident would ask, right? We, um, our town compromised some wells in the center, salt, and we voted to build a little small water district. We have a pump that used to be on Bradbury Mountainland, is now, is it still leased there?
It's, it's an easement.
It's up the hill, we have a pump and gravity feed down to the center. The water in this, this building, church?
No, the church actually comes from the parsonage.
Okay. Um, the store, the restaurant, and a couple of residents are on...
And the fire station.
Fire station. Oh. Pownell, um, Center Water Association. There's a pump house. Mr. O'Brien is the commissioner of the Water Association.
I'm the sucker.
Monitor, we compromise wells on a yearly basis. We would love to get out of the water business, but we have an obligation to the residents as well as we compromise. The short history of the Pownell Center Water Association. I think it's only appropriate if we do have an open house.
That's fine. We all drink water. Yeah.
Next time. Article 30, see if the town will vote to set September 15, 2025, December 15, 2025, March 15, 2026, and June 15, 2026, as the dates on which one quarter of taxes shall be due, payable, and charged interest at the rate of seven and a half percent per year, computed on a daily basis on any portion of the installment, dues that remain outstanding as of September 16, December 16, 2025, March 16, and June 16, 2026. Two, see if the town will permit the tax collector to designate, designate to waive unintentional tax interest payment shortages in an amount of not to exceed $5. And, three, see if the town will vote to authorize the tax collector to accept payment of real estate property taxes not yet due or assessed pursuant to 36 MRSA Section 506. Town does not apply interest on such collection. Questions about Articles 30? Article 31, to see if the town will vote to set three and a half percent as the rate to be paid by the town on abated taxes pursuant to 36 MRSA Section 506A, to authorize such interest paid on abatements granted to be appropriated from overlay funds or, if necessary, from unassigned fund balance surplus. Any questions? Anyone know what a tax abatement is? Is this just mystery language? Okay, could you just describe what a tax abatement is? It's really important to know this stuff. I'm glad you're here, the civic lesson.
I'm going to make it easy with an example. So say, um, you have a 10 by 10 deck, and you're being taxed on a 10 by 20 deck, and you come in and show that proof, then the assessor would file an abatement for that difference of what it should have been to what we had charged you. Goes before the select board, they approve it, and then I do some fancy work in the computer to, to apply that credit for you, and then it's split into the next installment. So that's the simple version of it.
If you ever have any questions about your tax bill or or anything about the way the town is appropriating money from you, you always have an ear with the assessing agent on the select board. If you are vindicated with your opinion, an abatement will be issued. It's just a or an article limiting us to the interest. Thank you for that explanation. Article 33, Article 32, see if the town will vote to authorize select board to transfer not more than 3% of the town's budget expenses between budget line items within an individual department, provided that the town's total budget expenditures shall not be increased.
This article allows the select board to transfer up to 3% between the expenditure lines within the same budget.
About that? Article 33, to see if the town will vote to authorize select board to transfer any unexpendited funds to the carryforward accounts within departments to complete projects from the previous fiscal year. Andy?
This gives the select board authority to approve carryforward requests from department heads and/or committees. These requests are always presented at the first select board meeting in July and must either have a signed contract, purchase order, or fiduciary obligation to fulfill. That was a tongue twister.
Something in progress previous year, we want to be able to complete that. You carry the money forward. Article 34, to see if the town will vote to authorize the select board and the town treasurer on behalf of the town to accept any gifts, unanticipated donations or pass-through funds that may be provided by individuals, business associations, charitable groups, or other organizations, which have not been listed in any of the previous articles, if the select board determines that the gifts, donations, or pass-through funds and their purposes are in the best interest of the town, and to expend such funds for their intended purposes.
It allows the treasurer and the select board to accept any unexpected money. So should I die unexpectedly and have an endowment left to the town for a hot tub for the select board? We'd be able to take that money and...
Article 35, see if the town will vote to authorize select board or they designate, seek, accept, and disperse grant funds from private county, state, or federal agencies with a purpose, so designated each specific grant, and to execute any documents related to such grants.
Attorney added the execute any documents to it after we said... Sorry, that was added language.
It allows the select board or their designated to seek out and carry out grants.
Article 36, see if the town will vote to appropriate funds received from the registration of snowmobiles, the Rocky Coast Radis, and Tri-Town Penguin Snowmobile Club for the purpose of maintaining their snowmobile trails, which are open to the general public without charge for snowmobiling, snowmobile purposes, and any other uses that may be authorized by the property owner. Andy?
This appropriates money to the two local snowmobile clubs for the upkeep of trails. The money is collected through snowmobile registrations.
So this is a notice that states that no money can be expended by the select board without authorization from the town government, which is town meeting. So I urge you to really just take a look at this. Come to the second public hearing, very respectful. More importantly, come to the town meeting, which is on...
June 23rd at 7:00 PM, um, scheduled at Pownell Elementary School Gymnasium with a backup location of Mallet Hall.
So constructing that, uh, we also were, we have to have a alternate location, but hopefully we'll be able to... Yes?
Um, Article 33.
In the, in the warrant narrative, it includes committees, departments and committees.
Do you just like to add committees?
Yes.
Okay. That can be the edit. I think it was implied.
We typically didn't have committees asking for carryforward requests until the last year or two, so we'll just update that.
Your money. It's a lot of money, you have possibility. It's towards of your money. We did our best, I have to tell you that this budget gets more and more complicated every year, whereas a state grinds into the local communities more and more mandates. To get anyone to appreciate this, to getting...
It's to the pods.
I'm going to call the regular select board meeting to order. Uh, we try to start with a pledge of allegiance, so if you're able to, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is fiscal year AP warrant 22 in the amount of
I will move that we pay AP warrant number 22 in the amount of $81,715.39.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to pay fiscal year 25 AP warrant number 22 in the amount of Is there any discussion? Seeing not all in favor, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is payroll journal number 386 in the amount of $14,728.21.
I will move that we pay payroll journal number 386 in the amount of $14,728.21.
I second.
Been moved and seconded to pay payroll journal number 386 in the amount of $14,728.21. If there are any further discussions, seeing not all in favor, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is, this is the previous meeting, March 24th, 2025, regular meeting, though capably recorded by Miss Kathy Ho.
I will move that we approve the March 24th, 25, 25 regular meeting minutes as provided by the capable hand of Kathy Ho.
We've been seconded to approve the minutes of March 24th. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is public comment, non-agenda items. Snap, submit any resident of the town of Pownell to step forward and be heard by their select board. Is there any resident from the town of Pownell that would like to step forward at this time and be heard?
Such a short line.
None? Next item on the agenda, department head reports. Department heads can be reviewed on their respective website pages. Go to the department, click it on, and there are wonderful reports, great reading. Is there any question from department heads from the select board at this time? Is there any question from department heads from the select board at this time?
I have none.
Then, or do I? Is there any report from the select board at this time?
Nothing to report at this time.
All right, next item is new business. Annual town meeting warrant edits, if any.
So here is where, other than something weird...
Let me turn my mic on, sorry. So here's where you can talk about the Article twenty-two, remember that, and that wording, and then any other edits. The RFP on the Mallett Hall is something we're going to talk about too, which coincides with what we've already talked about.
Do we want to edit that to reflect Article B?
So the question is...
Article twenty-two, Exhibit B.
Impact fees, right?
Right.
So Katie, thoughts about allowing the Article twenty-two to be changed from five hundred thousand dollars from unassigned fund balance to include thirty thousand dollars of impact fee from Public Works and fifteen thousand dollars of impact fee from Public Safety.
Would that require three articles, or can it all be done under one?
I have to add Article to extract them from the back. That's two. We have to have for each section, impact being...
They are different funds, so for transparency purposes, it would probably make more sense to have, have them be three separate articles.
You know, those impact fees have a history of expiring and need to use them.
Right. No, and it, I think it's a good use of, of impact fees.
That's appropriate use, right?
It is. I looked through the whole ordinance and sent that out to the committee back in February when we were looking at the figures, and this project does fall in line with the ordinance.
Okay, any thoughts?
It seems to me that this is a good idea.
Andy, you're upset with it?
I am. I will move that we include two more articles, including the thirty thousand from Public Works impact fees and fifteen thousand from Public Safety impact fees for the design and complete construction contract documents for the future combined Public Safety and Public Works facility.
I second.
So let's just do this.
Yeah, well, everybody in the dark hall.
So you've asked, asked to, to change warrant article number twenty-two to what you've just read. So we need to vote on that. We'll need to...
Amend Article twenty-two.
Just going to change Article...
I added two articles, one for the...
Okay, so, all right, so this is complicated. So...
Can we do Article twenty-two A and twenty-two B?
Well, we can amend Article twenty-two to take, what was it, four hundred and fifty-five thousand from unassigned funds, and then you can motion to add Article, which will become twenty-three, changing numbering to pull from Public Works impact, and then Article twenty-four, which changes subsequent numbering for the impact fees from Public Safety.
Let me withdraw my original motion, and I will move to amend Article twenty-two from five hundred thousand dollars to four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars.
Do you second that?
Yes, I second that.
All in favor? That's the first one.
And I will move that we create a new Article twenty-three, which will appropriate thirty thousand in, from Public Works impact fees to the Public Safety and Public Works facility.
I second.
Second and all in favor?
And I will move that we create a new Article twenty-four, which will appropriate fifteen thousand dollars from Public Safety impact fees for the Public Safety and Public Works facility.
And change subsequent numbering.
And change subsequent numbering.
I second.
Take out the change, that's great. Because you will need to, you don't want that part of this particular...
Okay.
Okay.
All in favor? Now you can say...
And I will move that we change subsequent numbering from twenty-four to the final.
Favor? Tell us, we need to...
I don't think there was any... Yeah, I think there's just grammatical, the only one that might have a slight change would be the seven thousand ARPA, because the insulation project's in progress now, so when I get the final bill, if it's a little off the estimate, then I might come back with those figure edits, but other than that, I think we're, we're in good shape.
Do we need to move on any of the zoning ordinance articles, the slight changes, the grammatical?
Most of those were grammar, yeah, and just verification. The articles themselves, the language wouldn't change anyway. It's really just the exhibits that we're fixing.
All right, let me move on. The next article, the Tuttel Road abandonment vote. Andy?
I will move that we move forward with abandoning Tuttel Road officially and keeping a public easement through the Libby Road from...
Sure that we move this correct.
Did he give the folder back to you?
Is it down here?
Probably.
No, we must still be down at the other end.
Letter that we wrote to the butters.
I can get just one. I'm going to hang onto this for a minute.
So we're going to move to... We're going to move to order the town, discontinue by abandonment, the Tuttel Road, portion of Tuttel Road from Halliwell Road to the Libby Road, and maintain a public easement on that road to include... Mittens of property to the butters from the center of being sixteen point four.
As permitted by twenty-three MRS.
Twenty-three MRS, sections three oh two, a badge, a five. Good, okay. You second that, Katie?
I second that.
Seconded, all in favor? Carrie, you're in.
So the, just, the follow-up process is there's a ten-day window for appeals that I file with the county commissioners, and that's the only place I have to file. Once that goes with no appeal, then I just file with the registry, so just be a little bit of time before you see it, but you can check in with me on the progress anytime. Absolutely.
Next item on the agenda, town attorney. Becky?
So I got a great visit from Ben McCall, who has been doing our town attorney work since Natalie Burns retired, and he notified me that Jensen and Baird is getting rid of their municipal division. So what that means is we have to now consider whether we're going to move with him over to Drummond-Woodsom. They have offered a rate of just twenty-five dollars more an hour than what we're paying now, or he would stay on per diem on a just need-by-need basis at the moment, and we could RFP for legal services to see what else is out there. Ben has told me he will bid on that RFP for us too, so it's really a matter of the direction the select board would like to go.
But?
I think we would be wise to stay with a firm that has a wide range of attorneys for differing needs, as we've used some for personnel matters and other things over the years.
We would get that with Ben moving to...
Right, but probably not with him bidding on it personally.
He wouldn't be bidding on it personally.
Or per diem.
He would, well, per diem, that's just in case you decide you want to put an RFP out and see what other is out there. He would stay on for any legal counsel we needed after the May fifth change while we were doing that RFPs.
So the question, I think, is whether do we want to stay with Ben or not, or do we want to stay with Jensen Baird? Jensen Baird does not offer against...
They are not offering us an attorney, so...
So I would like to, us to consider that putting on our RFP quick as we can, let Ben sign it, as we need to do by our RFP policy, and stay with that.
Agreed.
You had a good meeting, right?
I had a very good meeting. I, I've been very impressed by Ben. He's been working on panel, legal work for a few years with Natalie, so he has a little bit of history with us. I've heard from other office staff that have had interactions, that they just really felt really good about them, felt like they came away with answers. Yeah, so we've just been really happy.
So we need to answer Jensen Baird. So can we answer them without having Ben fold?
So your choices on the letter is either to transfer the files to Drummond or transfer the files to the town. So if you go with an RFP, you're going to have to sign the letter to transfer the files to the town for now, and then until we do the RFP and we award him the bid, if that's the way it goes, or whoever we award the bid to, then the files would get transferred to that person that, that retains our legal services.
Going to be products or they're going to...
I'm not sure. I would imagine there are probably some hard copy case files in boxes.
I will move that we transfer the client files to us pending an RFP.
So you're also going to create an RFP, mark that, and what we accept is that...
We'll have to look at all of them.
Okay. So let's just do, let's just do moving the files. Andy has recommend, has moved that we'll move our files to the town. Second that, Katie?
I second.
Second and all in favor? Andy, will you also move that we will send our RFP?
Yes, for client services.
Second that, Katie?
I second.
Favor?
Is there a discussion?
Yes, it could be, I'm sorry.
So the RFP policy necessitates that we have to go through the process that way?
There's been a lot of requests for RFPs in the managers' list served, so I will get a nice one that I can detail out pretty quick, bring it before on the twenty-eighth, and then we can get it out there. So hopefully, it's really just a couple of weeks.
When is his last?
May fifth, I believe, is when the transfer happens.
Okay. We contact that they, the process, we'd like to be able to contract with you on a per diem basis.
Yep, I will send him that letter tomorrow, and I will outline the direction we're going. Absolutely.
Computer purchase for a new workstation.
So to set up with our new part-time clerk, Crystal Hall, who came on board on April first and has been doing great and fabulous, and we're excited to have her. I requested an estimate from Ion, so this is just a, this is a desktop computer with the dual monitors, all the work to upload the programs to it. Right now, she does have access to an email box, sharing computers in the office. So this is just a request for that approval. There are funds in the computer line to pay that expense.
Question?
I'll move that we go forward with the purchase of a computer for the workstation.
For the total of nineteen...
For the total of one thousand nine hundred and sixty-two dollars and sixty cents.
Seconded to include a nineteen hundred and sixty-two dollars, sixty cents for theater for the third workstation. Is there any discussion? Seeing none in favor? Next item, have we, Andy, you've met the new employee?
I have.
Next item is Mallett Hall, dormer, RFP submission.
So I did scan just the top files, and the figures that are on the warrant came from this. This was the only submission that we got. As per policy, the board still does need to motion and accept this RFP. The other piece is, this estimate includes, and Kathy, you might need to jump in here, the materials, he did an estimate for wood, but he also did an estimate for aluminum?
Vinyl.
Vinyl, sorry.
So there are two estimates just for the windows, one for wood for fifty-four hundred and/or vinyl replacement for thirty-two forty. Josh really does recommend the vinyl because he's going to last that much longer, and this is a big project, it's expensive, so the longer they can last. So, but it's up to you guys which way you want to go, and I just, as a chair of Mallett Hall Building and Grounds, I did check in with the state historian on what we can do with, and that would be wholly appropriate to use vinyl. It's more about the aesthetics and not changing the look of the building.
Who is the company? Because we need to have that...
It is C and S Renovations.
I will move that we award the contract to C and, C and S Renovations with vinyl windows for the dormer repair.
Seconded to award the R8 CNS builders with vinyl window replacement. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none in favor? Do it.
So this will start after July one, pending town meeting vote.
Next item on the, short-term rental policy.
So I have printed the registration policy checklist certificate, and then this afternoon, you may not have gotten a chance to see, there was an email that came in from Gabe DeGristina, so I just printed that out in case you hadn't gotten a chance to see it this afternoon. This policy the town planner created, the CEOs and myself suggested edits, those have been made.
All right, so, Andy, where are you? Have you seen this? Have you...
I have seen this. We have one short-term rental, two here. I, have you all looked at this and have any?
Considering the...
Because this is a new meeting, should I restate my... Okay, all right. Yes, okay. So I guess I'm just wondering why this is going through as a potential as a policy versus an ordinance? I, I guess from my reviewing of the policies that are currently in place versus the ordinances that are currently in place, things that would happen on our... that are currently in place, things that would happen on our land usually is gone, has gone through as an ordinance, so that the whole town has the opportunity to vote on it at town meeting? I, yeah. That the question is, why is this going through as a policy versus an ordinance?
Speaking of short-term rental, they register. They're not regulating, just would like to know for public safety purposes where they.
Okay, if that is the case, it feels like they're, the way that it's currently written, and I'm not opposed to the way that most of this is written, I would say. It feels, it feels accurate and fair to what is, what you're trying to put into place. What I am, it feels like the CEO and the fire chief would have quite a bit of ability to say, to shut down a short-term rental instead of just registering the rental. Because it sounds, feels like they have a lot of power in, in this document. So my question would be, we have to, when the fire chief and the CEO come to do a check, what is the checklist that they're actually following when they do the check? I think for landowners, it's important for us, or business owners, for us to understand what we're trying to comply with. Is it just the checklist, the self-checklist that we have to provide with the application? Or are there more things that they are looking for beyond that?
Just the checklist.
Yeah, but what is the, when the, when the code enforcement officer and the fire chief come to evaluate and say yes or no to the property being in business, what checklist are they following?
They're following the homeowner checklist. They're just making sure that, that you comply.
What, but what's the, is this the homeowner checklist, the one that's the part of the policy?
The short-term rental owner's self-inspection checklist.
That's what they're going to follow?
Just to verify that you've done what you said.
Could that be made more clear in the policy language under number two? Because right now, it looks like they can just, you know, there's nothing guiding their, their check.
I should, I should take what I've said back because within, when the code enforcement officer steps foot on the property, he is going to have to make sure that, that building code compliance exists within the building. So I revise what I've said. He will do a building inspection.
So if that's the case, shouldn't this be an ordinance and not a policy?
Why, Heidi, why should it be?
So that everyone gets to vote, make their voices heard and voted on. It feels like the most democratic process and what our town has done for many years and has always done. And anything that we do on our land has been an ordinance and not a policy. When I've reviewed the policies, they, they do look like they're mostly clerical things and things that happen in this building or for business purposes for the town and not things that have to do with what we do on our land.
I, I think you'd find that an ordinance would be much more restrictive to you than a policy.
Okay.
The first version of this was an ordinance, and we received multiple outcries from other short-term rental property owners condemning us for such an ordinance.
Yeah. I, I guess, I just, this, this feels like the landowner doesn't have much. It, it just feels, number two feels very vague to me in what the, what is being like checked off? And that's why I was wondering, is it the checklist that is written here or is there more? And you're saying that they would go through more of their checklist by like, the code enforcement officer would be looking at all these other codes they have to follow? If we already have our occupancy permit, then the code enforcement officer has already gone through all that, that complete checklist in order to give us an occupancy permit? We've already met all the safety standards of the fire department in order to get an occupancy permit, so it feels very.
And you shouldn't have anything to worry about.
No, but it, I know, but it still feels like, it still feels vague in the sense that there's, feels like there's language missing if this is going to go forward as the way, what you're intending to do.
How would a short-term rental doing so in the manner that states and that the town of its safety is a prize of any possible inhabitants in a short-term rental? If there is a short-term rental that's been built, has not had the building inspected and inspected that's meant to catch that so that the building is built up to code? We have, to answer your first question, and Andy answered it really well, we have no desire to regulate people's property. That's why it's not, but we do have to incumbent upon the select board to protect the welfare of a whole town of towns and not be, put us in any way, form of an encumbrance upon the general population. We have an incident at a short-term rental where there is injury and the town is not able to safely take care of that situation because they don't know what exists in that location. And there is historically the viability set upon towns for not regulating short-term rental. We don't, we're not registering. Sorry, I made a mistake in words. We don't want to regulate, just want to know for no other reason but to make sure that public safety can take care of situations.
Well, there is some regulation in here, which I'm not opposed to what is being regulated. So, well, it's just like what the, just how the space is able to be used. And it's a form of regulation, just, you know, but I'm not saying that it's, I'm opposed to it. So what, yes.
Sorry, can I just make a comment?
Yeah.
Is, can we change the wording of A and two under registration and protocols and just say that maybe the CEO will check the occupancy permit and the checklist that's on the registration form and have the wording of that say that instead of current building code and life safety?
I'm pretty sure.
That feels like.
Under registration and protocols.
See where you are, yeah.
A and number two. I think what Heidi's concern is, is under determine if compliance with the current building code and life safety standards have been met. Can the wording say that the CEO checks the occupancy permit and the registration checklist?
Yeah, because that, to me, feels like we would have already gone through the whole list.
If it's a new STR.
Well, they would have to have an occupancy permit in order to apply, right?
STR is now accessory dwellings need to be inspected, correct?
Well, I have an accessory dwelling and I had to get an occupancy permit in order to even dwell in it myself or to have a family member dwell in it. So in order to be done with the project, I was given my occupancy permit. Which means I checked all the boxes of the town and the state's list.
Within a person's house, they decided to renovate an attic and use that for short-term rental. An attic would not have been inspected to the building, right, or for safety, fire safety. How can we protect the town from those situations? Because I mean, these are all really important questions. I understand your desire for property in the town has no desire to impinge upon your doing with your land what you want. But we do have people who work in the town that could be impacted by coming onto a situation that they weren't apprised of. Town, oh, more wants fire and safety to have to be experienced that just happened in this town.
Yeah.
So.
I have a couple more questions, if that's okay.
Stick with number two because Heidi had a recommendation.
Andy, what do you think of that?
I think number two should stand as it is. It's just another determination that compliance with current life safety codes and building codes have been met. And.
Is it onerous? Is it, is it hardship on, on?
I don't think so because it covers everything. If you've got an occupancy permit, you've got nothing to worry about.
Yeah.
But like John said, if somebody's renovating their attic and they're going to stuff short-term rental people up there, it probably doesn't have egress windows.
Yeah. I understand that. And when you explained it that way, that I just wasn't sure if there's going to be these things that they're coming to check for above and beyond the occupancy permit. So that's where it, because that language is, because it, it feels bad.
I mean, the only other thing is usually you don't have a, have to have a fire extinguisher for an occupancy permit, but it's always a good idea.
May I move on to my other two questions?
Are you okay?
Yeah, oh, yes.
Okay, thank you. So how will this transition take place for those already operating a business? What, what is the timeframe that the CEO and the fire chief have after the application has been completed and submitted to complete their inspection? It feels like there, there should be something on this saying they'll complete their inspection within so many days past the completed application being submitted.
Let's see.
Yeah. I would suggest that once the application is completed, that especially for an existing one already, that we wouldn't be necessarily holding up you.
Okay.
That would be my suggestion. And that we would make, you know, due diligence to get out there as quickly as possible, but we would not say you can't rent it until weekend.
Okay, because that was my concern. Could the town take the three months to come out and then we can't operate in that time period?
Certainly a huge amount of grace given. We just want to know that you're there, know that you're operating safely and, you know.
And my, the last thing is the grandfathering part of, we already, already have bookings through November, so I just don't know how that works for this new potential policy.
Keep them.
We're just trying to make sure people are safe. That's the way it's going and you have absolutely no problem. But two towns up, there was a old farmhouse with an attic with 13 people from another country.
Yeah, yeah.
It's just, we're not trying to catch anybody doing anything. Make sure that we're keeping the town protected from any project. It's not regulation, that's trying to register, just like we do.
Yeah, well, and you know, I've.
From public safety aspect.
Yeah.
So the fire department isn't going there blind and going, oh my God, there's people in there.
Yeah, well, I mean, well, yes. I guess my thought was if they have an occupancy permit, there's going to be people in there. But if the people don't have an occupancy permit, I can see that piece.
You have an occupancy permit as a short-term rental, that occupancy permit that's on the states, you know, for the house, it doesn't add an additional, maybe you should check around back because there are people around that.
Yeah, I'm saying if you have a, I was just saying, I understand that argument. It's, okay.
But we would probably have it marked with our dispatch, so when we're dispatched there.
Yeah.
We know that there's a short-term rental and we'll be looking for.
I guess the other part with the short-term rental is that if we didn't have a short-term rental, my parents could live there because we have an occupancy permit, like we could rent it year-round. So it feels like you'd have to go to and help those people anyway, even without this policy. Because there would, that, people who have gone through the steps to get their occupancy permit have done the things they needed to do and they can have people in that space even without the short-term rental. Yeah. Okay. I think I've asked my questions. And does it, I know that you've answered my questions, but does the piece there, Jesse, where you had mentioned the, trying to do things as quick as possible, I just wasn't sure for future people, if a date needs to be put in, like a timeframe, just because I, when you have other, when I've seen other town stuff, it feels like there's a, usually a timeline for people written into the policy so that the person applying knows what to expect from the person, the town that, when they're applying to them. So that's just some, something to consider. Thank you.
Chris Boujwa, 506 Elmwood Road. I just want to say thanks for all the effort that went into this because I, I think it really is clear that safety is put first and I, and it's a, quite a jump from where we started. So I appreciate all the effort that went into it from everyone. Quick question was, say I'm a new applicant and Jesse and Tim come over, they do their, their code enforcement, fire inspection. Is that a one-time thing? Is that, let's make sure everything's up to speed and safe? And then does that happen annually or is that just a one-time?
One-time.
Unless you add.
Right, unless something changes, bedrooms or.
As you meet the applicable code at the time of occupancy. So you're.
And then it's just come down to the town hall with the updated insurance and fill out the paperwork? Yeah. I think that's great.
Just to answer your question, right on the application, it will say renewal, no changes, renewal with changes. So if you check with changes, then that would spark the questions, I think of.
A new fix.
What changes did you make?
Okay.
We need to just come look at that.
Okay, yeah.
So that's right, you know, right on the front.
Yeah, perfect. Awesome. Thank you.
So I'm going to recommend table this and add some kind of window because what Heidi said is fair. So let's table this and we will add 90 days for an application. Is that fair? Okay, does that sound fair?
That's, that seems excessive.
Is Heidi doing it, too?
Yeah, I think 30 days.
40. I agree with 30 days.
Well, only because say we have 11 current, going to be able to do 11 current ones.
I would say, I would say the, the current ones, which would be technically grandfathered, would not, we would give to them what we can give to them, but they wouldn't have to hold us to business.
We're not going to hold up any business. All right, so let's table, then add 30 days if that's acceptable. We'll talk with the CEO and if he finds that conversation, you might have to change. So it'll be a 30-day, right? So we'll take this up next meeting?
Next meeting.
Thank you. And for your comments?
Volunteer form, Paul Carrigan. Andy? I don't know the man, but.
He is going to serve as a.
Planning board alternate. I had a nice conversation with him last week and narrowed down, he wants to serve.
Uh, I will move that we appoint Paul Carrigan to the planning board as an alternate.
My second.
Discussion. On favor? Thank you, Paul.
On this form, we may want to change that capital asset.
Yeah, that's an old form and every time I've taken it down and put the new one up, the old one somehow overrides. So it's something I need to work with on Jane Lean about, because it's missing a couple of committees on there. Yeah, it needs to be updated.
Okay.
Okay, how many of these do we have to sign?
I just gave you one copy because I can make my additionals from that one.
Would you like to approve the RSU 5 budget warrant?
Not really, but I will. I will move that we approve the RSU 5 budget warrant.
Move in second as you appoint, approve the RSU 5 budget warrant for the year 2000. Question, Tom Sabre.
The tri-town meeting of the warrant is on May 14th at Durham Community School at 6:00 PM. It is like a regular town meeting, you must be in attendance to vote on that one. And there's a Q and A session coming up at Pendle Elm and Free School. I think it's even this week, it's on our town calendar.
Um, is there any other new business? Any old business? Okay, correspondence. I have a letter here from Matt Welch, your panel. I have the honor of serving on panel conservation commission for the past 18 years. I'm gonna step aside after the April 26th, second meeting. Yours, Matt Welch. Can we send him a letter? Thank you.
Okay.
I also have very interesting.
I can give you context on that.
Please do.
So Mr. Wagner reached out last week and sent me this. This is a program he's been doing in Freeport and one he would like to do in panel in Durham as well. I just said I, he sent me this attachment, I said I would mention it, but he would be willing to come to a future select board meeting to really discuss in detail. I just wanted to introduce the topic tonight and then we can schedule him maybe towards the end of May. Okay. It's a civics 101. It's a six-week program designed to educate and inspire participants about the intricacies of local government while fostering connections within the community. Everyone here is gonna sign up for that, right? I think it is, come on.
Conclude, this is the, sort of the holy grail, we can include committee members and, and. A couple of things that we've been talking about, how important it is for freedom of information and confidentiality.
Absolutely.
Let him run the show and we just sort of cross our Ts and dot our Is. Okay. Becky, I just want to thank you for the budget and the narratives, it was excellent and.
Thank you.
I have one more correspondence. So roadside cleanup and automated service has become a question. So leading around May 3rd for the metal collection day, residents would do roadside cleanup, get the bags from us. Now with the carts, they can't pick up bags if it's not in the cart. So I have reached out to Casella, operations manager is on vacation till Wednesday, so we're gonna wait and hear the feedback, but I just wanted to kind of put it out there because we did send a flyer out talking about roadside cleanup. Solid Waste wanted to send a follow-up flyer this week and I put it on hold because what they're suggesting is if you're gonna do roadside cleanup, it would have to go inside your cart to be picked up. Unless Casella tells me something else, that might be the way that we have to go with.
How much are we talking?
I don't know, I mean, people will use their own bags too, so I can't judge. I might give eight or 10 bags out, but that doesn't mean that's what's collected because people just use their own bags at home.
Flyers say use your own cart, but if you don't have room, come throw it to the dump.
Okay, and that was one of the, the thoughts from Solid Waste, was using the dumpster if you don't have the ability to use the cart or you're too full, so. And we'll see what operations, they might say, well, we'll send a railroad truck those two weeks, who knows, but.
Or park a truck here.
Yeah. It's called the railroad truck, is the way they used to pick up. That's the, the technical term used in trash talk is the railroad truck.
Because they don't want to say they're trashmen, they say, I've been working on the railroad.
You have a question? Go ahead. Are you guys on that topic?
Yes. Under new business, this would be considered kind of new business. We got, we took ownership of our new dump truck that we got, that we voted on last year. That's all set up, it's in the fleet, it's being used. I have to send, we're gonna be ending up sending the old one out to bid in a sense or auction. But with that, how does the select board want us to, to move forward with that? Typically, we put it on an auction site. Do they want to set a minimum bid? Do they want to leave that up to, you know, I just figured I'd ask you guys, you don't have to come up with an answer, we'll just think about it.
We need to vote to designate the funds either to the department or, I think I stay with it.
I, no, I think they go back to capital projects.
They, they stay with the, the vehicle until the, for the year or so, until the vehicle, you know, is, is completed. And then the year after that, it goes back to capital, doesn't it?
They're talking about the sale. So the sale would, I think goes, if it was a capital expenditure from the capital reserve, then the funds go back to capital.
Okay.
But let's look at what we did when we did.
Because typically.
Sterling and the one-ton.
So what I'm thinking is the, like, the one-ton, and the way that this typically happens is when I order a vehicle, if I trade that vehicle in, that comes off the total number of what we've expended. And then, once the project's completed and the truck or whatever's all set up and ready to go, the, whatever's left in that line goes back to capital. Is how we typically do it. We didn't end up trading this vehicle in, for one. Typically, something like this, the, the dealerships don't want to take in trade of a used vehicle. And also, I feel that we can get, not that we're gonna make a ton of money, but more money for this vehicle on our own through an auction or whatever avenue we choose.
Thank you for bringing it up, you're welcome. I could explore a little bit and talk a little bit.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
I'm gonna move that we go to executive session.
There was one question in the audience.
I'm sorry.
It's okay, I thought you saw when you looked over.
Don't, don't, but I apologize.
Nicholas Cody, Minute Road. This may not matter, but a small clerical possible correction. When John was talking about the tunnel road and a rod length, he said 16 foot four, and I believe a rod length is 16 foot six. So again, for record, it may not matter, but just wanted to clarify.
Let me make it 33 feet wide. Right, 16 six is 33 feet even, my math. It's getting late at night, so. Okay, I have to note that.
16 and 16 is 32.
I have to put the width in, yeah.
Thank you. Look that up or we can.
You gotta channel her whenever we can.
So I'm gonna move that we go to executive session at five past eight. Thank you all for attending.